The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting on October 14th, 2025. We will bring it to order. No presentations tonight. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda? This is Council Leeser. Council Johnson. Shell-shocked there for a sec. Any questions, comments, all in favor? Okay. Up next, the minutes of the regular council meeting held September 22nd. We have a motion to approve these. Council Veroba, Council Mouse, any questions, comments, all in favor? Okay. Up next, original communications, delegations, and petitions. And tonight, we are joined by the Curling Club to discuss rental terms and conditions. So, welcome tonight. Thank you for coming tonight. And I guess the floor is yours to get her going.
All right. Thank you, your worship, and councilors. We're glad to be here. Yeah, it's just, we're here more as a little bit more information and introduce ourselves to some of the councilors here. Probably don't know a lot about the Curling Club and that. So, we're here just to talk about the Curling Rink for a few minutes and some of the things and what we do and whatever. First off, the curling is, we feel very highly important to the city of Estevan. We're a fairly viable club. We have a long tradition in the community. It's a popular pastime for residents of all ages. The Estevan Curling Club is a hub of activity hosting numerous bonds bills events throughout the curling season and over the years. Curling also brings in visitors from the surrounding areas and from around Saskatchewan. It boosts a lot of the local economy with bringing these people in. Additionally, curling helps to build community spirit and camaraderie among its residents. Overall, curling plays a significant role in the culture and social fabric of Estevan. So, I mean, most of us have been around the curling clubs for a lot of our lives and maybe not everybody's played it, but I'm sure a lot of people have been there to watch it. And it's a great sport. Just a couple statistics here. For our club, we have about 200 members, plus or minus every year. So, it seems to be growing a little bit again. Thirty-two percent of our membership is under the age of 18. About 20% is seniors, which is about 55 or 60.
I did 65.
65, sorry. 65 and over is about 20%. And then 48% is remaining is our adults that curl. Well, we curl three nights a week. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday is our main curling nights. We do have fun curling on Friday nights and stuff throughout the year. We've, our sources of revenue is hosting events such as bonds bills, tournaments, and corporate events. That's how we generate a lot of our curling club and entry fees, sponsorship deals, the food and beverage sales is also. So, this is how we operate between that and collecting fees from our members. Events at the Curling Club can bring in participants and spectators from out of town, and they spend a lot of money in our local hotels, restaurants, and shops. And this is a fairly welcome economic boost throughout the winter for when we do have these events. Back in 2018, we had Sastel Tankard, which brought an economic value to the community of about 1.1 million. We had in 2018, we also had the Canada Cup of Curling, which was a national televised event. And that one economic value was probably about 3.2 million to the community. 2023, we had the Scotties Tankard, which brought about 1.8 million into the community. What is, oh, and in club provincials, about 200,000, and we held six of those in the last seven years. So, we do generate a lot of income into the community by having these events, these larger events. And, you know, we're always looking to have another event. Unfortunately, last year's event that we were trying for, which would have been the National Scotties, we did not, we're not successful with it, but they said we were very, very close to getting it.
Excellent.
So, just some of the things with Curl Canada, that's changed. So, it's, makes it tougher for a smaller community to get those events. So, we're going to be looking at more provincial events and events that we can host in the club because we realize that it's such a big expense, plus it's an inconvenience when we do have the use of affinity. But, I mean, the city has been great with helping us with that when we have these bigger events. And, I mean, it's been a great economic driver when we do have those.
Yeah.
So, that's some of the things that we've had with our curling stuff here. I know we have some things with our contract here that we're going to discuss. We'll get together with Aaron and maybe Shelley will come along and we'll get that all ironed out and get it signed here shortly and get that all figured out. I know there's a few little sticking points, but I mean, that's all can be worked out, I think. So, I don't know. Was there some other things here, Pauline, that you had?
Yeah. Regarding the contract, again, thank you for having us here this evening. We'd like to petition the council to consider the increase that you're proposing in the contract for our seasonal rental fees. As you guys are aware and has been produced to our city reps at our meeting, they have seen our financial situation and where we are. And I believe maybe an understanding needs to be that our hosting of large events is a major reason why we are a viable club. It's such a help for us to keep our everything moving along and growing at the Curling Club. And the lack of success last year getting the Scotties, how we'll have to make us reassess our financial standing and how we're going to be moving forward. And we will be moving forward. And I don't want it to sound negative at all. But, so we do have concerns about the proposed increase that was put forth. I think there's some of the other things in here are nuances of things that were taken out of the old contract that may be just wording that we would propose that be put back in. Also, just clarification on the rental. The new proposal is September 15th to April 1st, whereas we always did have the building until April 15th and worked with the city and the strippers in particular to make sure that their event went off without a hitch. And in this new proposal, we're being proposed that we'll miss two weeks of revenue opportunity for the Curling Club. So, I would like council to bear that in mind when you deliberate whether you're prepared to make a different proposal to come forward for us. So, I appreciate your consideration on that.
Okay. Thank you for coming in tonight again. Any questions, comments for the Curling Club? Seeing none, I guess. Council Veroba?
Thank you, your worship. Pauline, you had mentioned in our meeting the rental rate was something you guys were concerned about. So, in the event when you negotiate the other terms, that will probably be done more so with Aaron and Jeff. And then I would only get involved as a group because even when I'm a council rep, I still only there in the interest of the city. But you had mentioned the rate increased from 30,000 to 35,000. So, that was the main reason, I thought, for coming here tonight. I was just wondering if that was still of interest because it would be council decision to be able to change that number.
Yeah. That is a concern. It was raised approximately 17%.
So, then is your ask that it be returned down or to a lesser amount? Is that what we had talked about?
Would be our preference if it remained at 30.
Okay, excellent. Council Johnson?
Yes, Mayor Cernick. Just with organizations and as organizations flourish and expand in the community or maybe plateau with the same number of, I'm going to say, participants in the community in sports. When's the last time that your group has had a review of the rates that they charge for, let's say, I don't know, if you block it into seniors group, do you charge them a certain rate and then the other age limit and then the underage 18, a certain rate? Like, when's the last time your group did a review of your charges to your, I'm going to say, your groups?
Thank you for the question, Council Johnson. Last year, we did a significant increase in rates, and it went across the board from seniors right to the youth. This year, we also increased our fees another $5 in order to cover. Curl Canada has upped our rate. So, we upped it $5 to help alleviate that cost. But last year, we did, and it was, it was a significant increase. And we also are acutely aware that we need to keep our fees in somewhat in line with our counterparts. And our counterpart, we feel, would be the Waverden Curling Club, given the size of the community, the size of the rink, and so forth. So, we're trying to stay in the same ballpark as what they, where they are. So, yes, for sure, we have been addressing making sure that our fees are up and at an appropriate level.
Okay. And saying that, you compare yourselves with Waverden and what their charges are, and you must be sharing that information openly, right?
Yeah.
So, that's good. That's all good news. And it's good to see that you've had a look at your increases last year.
Yeah.
And what does your membership feel like when you do an increase like this? You get a lot of membership that, you know, doesn't want to come back to curling anymore? Or do you get a lot of backlash? Or just explain to me, like, how do you justify it to the members when you are faced with an increase and how they accept it, I guess? Like, is there a lot of feedback that you do get? Positive, I hope?
Actually, I can say I didn't have anybody last year come in in the fall and pay their fees. Or, I mean, we were very transparent, but I didn't get any backlash. People, people understand that costs for everything has went up for us, too. And they want to continue to have the same service. They want to have, you know, an ice maker. They want to have great ice. You know, they want a pro shop. They want a nice place to go upstairs. And I would say our membership was very accommodating and very understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Pauline, for coming in this evening. And also, thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Foreman. Thanks.
Okay. Council Veroba?
Thank you, your worship. Just to recap, Pauline, one thing we had talked about in our meeting is a few of the board members had gotten quite passionate about the fact that it's fully volunteer-run base board. You are the manager of the Curling Club, but then the rest of everybody that puts their time in basically is volunteer. And the 17%, you were looking for rationale based on why it went up 17%. If you have 200 members right now, it would be $25 per person if you increased your rates to cover the $5,000. So, that would be, it might be 17% to you guys as all overall, but that would be roughly 15%. If I did my math a little bit in my head, maybe 12% of an increase to your curlers' membership right now. Or how much, how much would that be? I'm trying to increase it by 200 people, but how, what is your membership right now currently for an adult?
For one league, $355.
Okay. So, then you would have to raise that up to 380. And so, that would possibly make a significant difference?
That would make a significant difference. And because this proposal also takes away two weeks of potential curling for us and income for us. So, you know, whether it be the canteen or the bar upstairs or rental opportunities, so it does make a difference.
So, in just the rationale for the two weeks, I can speak to that, was the fact that because the stripper tournament and those sort of things, so the ice was always out anyways, so it wouldn't be curling for those two weeks is what we talked about in here. It was more so you guys would then not have the rental revenue of another group renting that surface.
Right.
Right? And so, then it does take away from your bottom line revenue. So, I think that was just the questions that were asked from me that night as to the rationale behind the 17%.
Yes. And we do, I was approached already by a group that would like to use the lounge upstairs and have us host them like we did last year in April. But that won't be an option if this, these terms are accepted to April 1st. That won't longer be an option for us to have that rental and that income.
Council Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor Cernick. Just another question. Like, there's a lot of grants out there that flow in, that flow in and come through our community. And some of them, like the community grant from gambling, like, say, from slot machines and ticket sales. Are you applying for those grants? Are you able to tap into some of those revenue streams, those grants for the Curling Club?
Yes, we are able to tap into a lot of grants at present. I have four out. I received one today from the city of Estevan. So, thank you very much for your support that we've got. But yes, I have four pending at the moment. And we do go in for many grants and to help us with a number of things. Like, we supply sliders and brooms and stuff for people to come and to curl at the curling rink. We have all sorts of, we are the host club for two provincial events in the club this season. There's things that we're required to have, like new measuring sticks and different biter sticks. And we need to have certain kind of circles put in. All of those things are things that we apply with granting to get. And the hosting events has become extremely competitive, not just nationally, but also provincially. Curl Sask has changed its mandate and ability to request hosting opportunities. And so, some of the events, like the Scotty Tankard that we had in 2023, it could be up to seven years before we'd have the chance to bid for it again. And once we bid, we are in a region that there's probably a minimum of two other clubs that would also make a bid for that. So, it could be 15 years before we get a chance to host an event like that again. So, you know, that's a concern for us, and we're working through that of how we're going to, you know, keep generating income through events and keeping the curling scene happening here in Estevan. But as far as the grants, Council Johnson, yeah, constantly have grants going on all the time.
Okay. Thank you very much for your answer and your response. Thanks.
Okay. Excellent. Seeing no more questions. Do we have a motion out there for the Curling Club tonight? Maybe to even table it for further discussion? Council Veroba?
I think we do have to table it because right now, we're not prepared to accept the contract because I think they need to meet with Aaron and Jeff or Aaron and whoever it is that meets with Aaron when they do these contracts and basically table it for management, the administration to work out the contract details with them.
Okay, excellent. I seen a second there. And Council Elliott, any more questions, comments? See a none, all in favor? So, thank you for coming in tonight, and we'll be in touch.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, resignation of city clerk Judy Pugh. Been waiting for this a long time. So, it's with greatness, great sadness, and huge jealousy that, oh, I was going to read the Estevan Curling Club there. Please accept this letter of notification of my retirement. I've had the great privilege of holding the position of city clerk for many years, and it is time to step aside. Thank you to councils both past and present for providing the opportunity to serve the city of Estevan. It has been invaluable and a memorable experience. I'm out of here November 1st. Or, not me, sorry. So, just want to obviously thank you, Judy. And you are an asset to the city, and you'll be missed.
Thanks.
Open up the floor to any councilors. Council Elliott?
Thank you, your worship. Are we bound by any law to accept this?
I think she's out of here whether we like it or not.
Thanks, Judy.
Excellent. Council Veroba?
Yes, thank you, Judy. Do we need to make a motion to accept this?
Oh, yes.
We have to put it on the books. So, I will make a motion that we regretfully accept your resignation. I've been on council with you now for nine years. You have been a pleasure and an asset to serve with you. So, thank you for all your assistance. And I know that you've also trained your successor very well. So, he will do great things, but only because you helped train him as well. So, thank you.
He's trying to hide over there.
Yeah, he is.
Thank you for that motion. Anybody second that motion? Council Leeser? Everybody's good? All in favor? There you go. You got her. Thank you. Up next, St. Joseph's Foundation requests for rental reduction. Festival of Trees. 13th Annual Festival of Trees is coming up in November, and we are looking for a reduction of $3,750 from the attached quote from Leisure Services, Aaron Wilson. Do we have a motion to accept Council Leeser?
Thank you, your worship. I do not want to accept this request. And the reason for that is earlier in our term, we spoke with management. We discussed how these rates for nonprofit groups are set. We set our rate recovery bylaw for the year that did specify what the nonprofit rate for rental would be. And through working with the Leisure Services manager, St. Joseph's Hospital has already received quite a favorable quote. So, for example, the city of Estevan has waived the cost of the equipment that they require to host the event. The city has waived the dates that it's required to be closed for, only charging them the reduced rental rate for the day of the event. So, if they were a for-profit organization, this rental would require $24,000. And because the city has a nonprofit rate, their quote was provided at $9,586, which is a 42% reduction from the posted nonprofit rate, which I feel is a significant show of support from the taxpayers to this organization.
Okay. Sounds good. Throw the second there. Council Mouse?
Yes, thank you, your honor. I have to agree with Council Leeser. I think, excuse me, I think we're asking quite a bit of the taxpayer to, they're giving, they're getting a rather large discount as it is, and this all goes to the taxpayer as a burden. And I think we should not accept this.
Okay. So, that's a second there to the motion? Yes? Okay. Any other questions, comments out there? Council Veroba?
Just to clarify, Council Leeser, you're requesting that the amount due, the hospital wanted to pay $3,750, and your motion is that they pay $9,586 as per the?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments out there? See, oh, Council Johnson?
I don't agree with the motion. I totally against it. I think this is a good organization that does a lot of good fundraising for the community and right now especially when we have the need for everything that's going on with healthcare in the community and surrounding communities. I think this is important to show that we can burden some of this extra little bit of cost. I would think that we, we do allow in our budget, money's going towards the St. Joseph's Hospital organization. But the foundation itself, they're doing a worthy cause here. So, I think it's incumbent on us to recognize this. It's going to a good cause, bottom line. It's for the community. Taxpayers aren't losing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments out there? Council Veroba?
Thank you, your worship. Just to speak to this, too, I am kind of hovering on the fence right now because it is a year where we're closing in on trying to get the MRI brought to the city. We have done it in the past, and I think in their budget, they've probably allotted for the $3,750 with the past being that we've given it to them for that price. I can also appreciate, though, exactly what Council Leeser is saying, that we do allot for $100,000 annually right now in this 2025 budget for the hospital, which went directly to the MRI. And we also did purchase a table to support this event as well at a $1,200 cost. And so, that's $112,000 that, or sorry, $101,200 that we've given to the hospital out of the taxpayers' budget this year. So, this is about a $6,000 ask that they are asking for, which I guess isn't the end of the world, but yet could be seen also as a big hit to their budget for this year. So, it's, I'm also with, just hovering right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Council Leeser?
Thank you, your worship. I do think this is part of the bigger conversation. I know the graduating class has also come before council in the past, asking for a significant rate reduction, and it was only granted for one year. So, that conversation also continues with the community about what the role of the taxpayer is in subsidizing events. And I think this is a reasonable place to start.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments out there? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second there. So, all in favor? Opposed? Council Johnson and Council Veroba? Everybody else was in favor? Carried. Up next, written reports of committees. We have Creighton Lodge, a whole whack of them. Can we do them all at once?
Yep.
That's what I like to hear. Who is our representative for Creighton Lodge? Council Johnson, can you fill us in a little? What, while what's been happening there? We've got a few months on the books here.
Oh, thank you.
Like, we got a new kitchen, you know?
Well, yeah.
Lawn looks good, you know?
No, there's been a lot happening over at Creighton Lodge. As you can see, the minutes, there are just quite often, lots of information here has been exchanged. We're always talking about the new items that are getting put into the kitchen and what's going to be installed next. There's lots of communication back and forth with the contractor and also the architect of the project, making sure that we stay on task and stay within budget, which is very important. We've had a large community, surrounding a community with the RMs and from many people around the community for fundraising that's occurred, as you well know. And a lot of the RMs have pitched in and tried to help out and done a spectacular job of raising funds and raising money for this big expansion for the kitchen. And as far as that goes, I understand that it's going to be in full swing here, opening soon, November 1st, right, is the date? So, we can all look forward to that. And I think they're going to branch out even with Meals on Wheels to help out some of the organizations in the community. Yeah, they're working on that. They're working on that. Okay. So, that's another thing that we're working on. And there's many things that are happening with the United Way and a number of different things that are going on as we can see when we have our work bees in the springtime over at Creighton Lodge and people help out. They come over and plant trees and look after the grooming of the manicuring of the premises and stuff like that. So, this is a one busy place. There's a lot of seniors that are, that are coming in from the surrounding communities that are knocking on the door and they're wondering when is, when are they eligible to partake and, you know, take a room at the Creighton Lodge? So, it's a waiting list that's ever-growing. It's not getting shorter. It's ever-growing. And I know that I can attest to that, and I can see that how well it's run. We've got good maintenance over there. We've got a solid program, and we've got really good members on our board. And I'd like to thank everyone that participates and has donated to the Creighton Lodge for this worthy cause, for our community, for our seniors in our community. So, once again, it's a good organization. And if there's any other further questions, I can answer to them, I hope. Kind of gone through some of these meetings, and I haven't been to the last couple of meetings. I understand there's a meeting coming up shortly, tomorrow morning. And we're just putting the finishing touches on the building. And I thank all the local contractors that were involved and did a spectacular job of putting this kitchen together for us and the patience from all of the clients over at Creighton Lodge while we were undergoing this big expansion. So, this is really good for our community.
Excellent.
Yeah, really, really good. That's all I have to say, Mayor Cernick. And that was great to partake in this, I'm going to say, project for Creighton Lodge.
Excellent. Sounds good. Thank you for that. We have a motion to accept Creighton Lodge Minutes. Council Leeser, selected by Council Dubowski. Questions, comments? See a none, all in favor? Carried. Up next, Forest Valley Museum Minutes, September. We have a motion to accept these. Council Elliott, second by. Council Mouse, questions, comments? See a none, all in favor? Carried. Estevan Regional Library, September Minutes. We have a motion to accept these. Council Leeser, second by. Council Mouse, questions, comments? See, Council Mouse?
Yeah, I have one question. There's one in point six that we're talking about ceiling tile replacements in the maintenance. Is that city or is that the library paid for that?
Anybody back there? At Council, Council Veroba, sorry?
Yeah, it would probably be the facility itself.
September Minutes.
Yeah. So, they actually, when I was on the board, Council Elliott may be able to also bring into this, is that the actual maintenance in the building happens with, through the city. And then if there's a special project, then sometimes the library will fund it. But it's usually anything to do with the actual building itself is through the city.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments out there?
Oh, sorry.
See a none, all in favor? Carried. Up next, executive reports, Water Services Manager. Water Quality Report for September 2025. Do we have a motion to accept this? Council Dubowski, second by. Council Elliott, any questions, comments? See a none, all in favor? Carried. Building Permit Report, September 2025. Do we have a motion to accept the building report? Council Leeser, second by Council Johnson? Counselor Willezer, second by Counselor Johnson. Questions, comments? Counselor Johnson?
Yes, it was really nice to see another house getting moved in along Wellock Road here this last past week. And I understand it came from south of town, and it was a big undertaking. But the house was nicely brought in and with the garage attached, I was surprised. And they twisted it around and got it on that new foundation. I wasn't too sure what was going on, but it's directly east of our little nursery that we have over there for tots and the kids that are over there on Wellock Road. So that's really a nice addition for the city of Estevan and Wellock Road. So...
Hopefully the first of many.
That's very nice to see, yes. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, we had a seven, most second there. Do we have a second there? All in favor?
Yep.
Carried. Building permit, introduction of bylaws. We're going to try this one, two, three again tonight. Trina, would you please come up to the microphone and take us through what we will be trying to approve for tonight?
Your worship, so this is a bylaw. This bylaw is a legislative requirement to allow for a time extension. This extension would authorize the Board of Revision to grant a decision outside of the 180-day cutoff of September 25th. This is the first year that it has been up to the municipalities to pass a bylaw. Previously, it was required, if required, an extension was granted by the province. We now have 30 days from September 25th to pass this bylaw to be compliant. Unfortunately, we did not, we only have one council meeting within that timeframe, so I am requesting for all three readings to take place tonight. Without this extension bylaw in place, any decisions rendered by the Board would have a potential to be appealed as being invalid for being decided outside of the timeframe allowed for current year's Board of Revision proceedings. I would like to thank you for your understanding, and if you have any questions?
Okay, um, can we open up the questions right now or do we got to go to second reading first? We can open them up. Questions, comments? Here, Trina. Counselor Mouse?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just have one question. Um, this is just like a one-time extension or is this like a permanent thing?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, this is a one-time extension and actually, so when they had approached me, they had two days before the 180 days expired. And so they were working on, they had had the hearings at the end of August, and so they were working on the decisions. And actually, they granted all the decisions for all 76 appeals on Friday. So we have the decision. So it is a one-time extension. Yeah.
Great, excellent. Questions, comments? See none, Kate? Well, Counselor Johnson?
Just a question. So in a typical tax year, Trina, how many of these tax, what do you call them? This was an unusual year because this was also a reassessment year that we just occurred, right? So we had a lot of people looking at their review of their taxes and some of them were increases, there's 75, you said, that were coming to us, the city, that we had to, that were being appealed, right?
Yeah, 76.
How many in a, in a normal year, like say without having a reassessment, like we went through with the reassessment, do we usually get for evaluation to, people come in and they just do this with their taxes? This is a year that was a spike, wasn't it?
Yeah, so actually, thank you. So the last, so reevaluation we do, there is quite, quite a few more. But actually, in the last few years, like these tax agents, I want to say that last year we had about 76 appeals and we have for like the last four years. So when they appeal to the SMB, then in order for that decision to stand, they have to keep appealing it every year. So the numbers are high, but they keep like, so out of 76 appeals that were heard, I want to say that 68 of them were dismissed. Yeah, so, yes.
Okay, so is that like... I'm, I'm just questioning this. Is, is the number going up or is it increasing? Like, is there more work for this, this Board of Revision to be undertaking or assessing for us? Did we put more work on them? Did they experience more dialogue, I guess, with taxpayers then? That more time needed?
No, I would say that it stays the same currently. And so these last appeals, they, they heard, like they had the lead appeal. So they actually heard 70 appeals. They were all disputing the same, the same issue. And again, it's tax agents that every year go after, try to go after something. So actually, these appeals were heard with the RM of Estevan appeals because it was the same argument. So I don't say that it is increased, it's just kind of staying, staying the same. Yeah.
Because why I ask these questions, Trina, is like me getting back on council here again, I just noticed like, which especially what we've gone through is a lot of these properties that are not paying their taxes are just letting them go and they default to the city, right? So we're, we're having them for a couple of years and then we're, we're trying to sell them, I guess, to the public. We've had these open sales to the public. So I'm just wondering about that because in my time on council, I didn't see too much of that, but I do see a lot of that now going on. Is, is people like not paying those taxes or they're asking not to be, you know, maybe, maybe having more time to pay for them, right? Asking for a duration to pay for their taxes and stuff like that. That's something that I'm witnessing more these days, so I just want to point that out to you, I guess, and maybe you're seeing it too, I'm not sure.
Yeah, like, so this is speaking to the assessments though, not, like, this is strictly just for the extension of the assessments.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's still within the, the same allowable time for tax enforcement. We do, like, so taxes are unofficially due until December 31st. And then, so tax enforcement will start again in January. Yeah, so that, that process has, has not changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I just thought I'd ask you those questions. Thanks, Trina.
Thank you.
Excellent. Let's send this to first reading. Do we have a motion that bylaw 2025-2102 to extend the Board of Revision time period for tax assessment within the city of Estevan be taken as being given first reading? Do we have a motion for first reading? Counselor Willezer? Seconded by Counselor Verba, all in favor? Carried. The bylaw 2025-2102 to extend the Board of Revision time period for tax assessment within the city of Estevan be taken to second reading? Do we have a motion for second reading? Counselor Johnson? Seconded by Counselor Mouse. Questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. Now, we need a motion that referral of bylaw 2025-2102 to council and committee for the study to be waived. Do we have a motion for this? Counselor Willezer, Counselor Elliott, second it. Questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. Another motion, that bylaw 2025-2102 be given three readings at this meeting. So we need a motion to send this to thir- third reading. Counselor Verba, seconded by Counselor Mouse. Questions, comments? See none. All in favor? Carried. Last but not least, that bylaw 2025-2102 be annexed to these minutes be taken as having been given third and final reading, approved and adopted for the use by the city of Estevan. Do we have a motion for this? Counselor Johnson? Seconded by Counselor Dubowski. Questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you for everything, Trina. Uh, what do we got next here? Ooh, another bylaw, to amend 2015-86 records retention. We had first reading last meeting, so now we are at second reading. Do we have a motion for second reading? Counselor Willezer, seconded by Counselor Verba. Questions, comments? Counselor Mouse?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I have, what, how does Estevan archive its materials that are kept? Are they like electronically or on paper or, or what do we do? Is there like a big vault somewhere or something?
Your worship, Counselor Mouse. There's records everywhere. There are electronic, there's vaulted ones, there's archived ones. We have an archive room that, everything is archived. So all permanent records must remain in, in, on site the way they are. And then other records are, you know, PDFed and all of those things. Permanent records of buildings and things like that are permanent. So this retention bylaw was upgraded to allow for electronic storage and the removal of electronic storage to be able to make sure we don't run out of room. People just think because it's on the computer, it doesn't take up space, but it does. So this is why we've revamped it.
Any more questions out there? See none, all in favor? Carried. Is that just second reading?
That was second?
Do we have a motion for third reading on this bylaw? Counselor Mouse, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Questions, comments? See none, all in favor? Carried. Inquiries, Counselor Verba?
Thank you, your worship. I have a few. So you had asked me to attend the event Taste of the Nations at the Southeast College.
Thank you.
I did. Unfortunately, I put it in my calendar at 6:30, so I missed the opening remarks. So I do apologize to them. But the event was there to bring community members together of all backgrounds to share food, stories and cultural experiences. And it really did do that. It was an incredible event. It was overflowing into the hallway. So I don't know where they're going to do it next year, if they're going to keep it at the college. They got to put more tables up automatically because I feel like it's going to sell out immediately. So many great cooks and they were showing off all of their different traditional dishes. Went home very full. I received a call for bylaw regarding the placement of garbage cans, recycling cans, and so they were looking into that. The concern was more of how they placed them in their front yard and how close they are to the street, and also sometimes the placement of them back into their yard versus staying on the street. It's also a good thing too, if you're leaving your garbage cans out for a few days, you're letting people know that you're maybe not home. So get a neighbor to bring them in. Uh, the other thing was a traffic board inquiry as to the signage at the Black Grasshopper, the entrance off Kensington. When you're coming and you're going north, you should only be able to turn right. And when you're leaving the Grasshopper or that mall area from that entrance, you should, or exit, you should only be able to turn north. You cannot go south from that entrance and exit. A lot of people, maybe I've done it before, but I don't think so. They enter and exit wrong incorrectly. So that is something. And the police did indicate that they possibly would, if they could, increase patrols in that area. So just fair warning, it is being looked at. So hopefully they do.
This is your warning.
This is the warning, just because I called it in. So if I give myself a ticket, I mean, if I get a ticket, I'm fair, fair warned. Um, also, I attended the Truth and Reconciliation event on September 30th at the museum. The Matee Association puts that on. The Burins were there serving and the Matee Association was there, and they made the fry bread and all of their members made the different types of stews. Very delicious. It's about my third year that I attended. And it would just, every year just keeps on getting bigger and bigger. So next year, I recommend everybody that can to attend. And finally, this weekend, United Way Telethon, October 17th and 18th. It starts on the 17th at 8:00 a.m., ends on the 18th at 5:00 p.m. They're still looking for people to volunteer in different spots, maybe work a camera, even just come on down and fill the seats and support the local entertainment. So if you can, head on down to the Legion and support your local telethon. If you can't head down, then just get your wallets out and support that way. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Mouse. Nothing tonight. Counselor Elliott?
Nothing, your worship.
Nothing, Counselor Dubowski? Nothing, Counselor Johnson?
I've got three here mentions.
Okay.
Couple of them are fairly, I think, important. I'd really like to thank the city crews for, I'm going to say, helping out and sprucing up the city. I know it's fall time and things should be, you know, put away and getting ready for the cold weather and stuff like that. But it was nice to see all the line painting and the line marking in the city of Estevan, like all the center lines. They're all painted on all the streets. I mean, we, I thought we were just going to do three blocks on Fourth Street. Man, they, they broadcast a lot of the line painting all over the city and they did a lot of the crosswalks too. Some of that has been done. I seen today out, there was, Street Sweeper was out today cleaning up some of the streets, some of the leaves, some of the dirt that's on the streets. It's nice to see all this still happening in the city of Estevan, keeping it clean. Uh, we just had our big cleanup around our properties and we went to the landfill and dropped off all our, our residential waste and stuff like that, having the garbage, I'm going to say the area open there for residents. Another thing I know, I noticed around the community, Mayor Sernick, is all, a lot of construction that I see going on around the community. And it's nice to see, once again, it's nice to see. Estevan is starting to, you know, swing the hammer, if you want to call it that. Uh, we're starting to put buildings together, we're starting to put rafters up, we're starting to do a lot of construction in and around the community. Underground trenches are going in, underground lines are going in. Things like that, that I haven't seen for a long time in the community, things are starting to move. And another question I have, and it's an inquiry question, is I see some areas around the city, especially on King Street, where there used to be stop signs, and now it's just a pole without a stop sign. But it's on a, let's say on a residential or a commercial, a commercial property. Uh, I'm talking like about when you leave, we used to leave Canadian Tire, there used to be a stop sign there. There's nothing there now when you went out onto King Street. And the one over at Knoll Frills Gas Station, there's the pole there, the stop sign's blown away. And when you go down to, there was another one at Sobeys, there used to be a stop sign there when you exited the Sobeys parking lot. There's nothing there. Now, I know you're on the police board, Mayor Sernick, and I don't know, like, this is something that, that had to be done when we authorized the building permits for these commercial buildings, that they had to have stop signs when they, off their property, going off onto a busy street like that? Or is it incumbent on the city of Estevan to look after those stop signs? Is it our responsibility or does it default to them? That's the question they ask you. You're on the police board. Maybe you can have the police assess it and feel if it's not warranted to have a stop sign there. Maybe we don't need one there. But there used to be them there, now they're not anymore.
Yeah, obviously, they probably should be there. Do you have that list, Paul? Can you email me that list?
I can email you that list, sir.
We can absolutely take a look at that.
But they've, some of them have been gone for a long time, long time. Some of them are just recently gone. And, yeah, I'll, I'll email you that list. But that's my inquiries.
Because especially coming out of Knoll Frills or the other way, when you think of it, you're on King, that's a main artery. And the people coming out of those places would, without a sign, would technically have the right of way. And that can't be, so please email me that list and we'll get that looked at.
Can do, can do. Thank you very much.
No problem. Counselor Willezer?
Thank you, your worship. To echo that it's United Way Week in Estevan, there is the kickoff happening tomorrow at Murray GM from 11:30 until 1:30. Anyone from the community is invited to come out. They do serve beef on a bun for lunch. Just asking that people make a donation. It's your first chance to take a look at the bid items to purchase raffle tickets for the quilt. The Public Library is also gearing up for their fall book sale. This twice annual book sale is one of their biggest fundraisers of the year. So if people have books to drop off prior to October 23rd or if people would like to pick books up from October 23rd to 25th. The last event I wanted to mention is that we do have Coffee with Council coming up again this week. It's this Thursday night from 7 until 9 p.m. at the Buzz Licker Lounge in Affinity Place. We are looking to discuss future growth, what's coming to town. But it's an opportunity with anybody from the community who has questions about any topic to come out, meet with council, see if they can get those questions answered or where we can take those questions next to find answers for them.
Excellent. Thank you for that. City Clerk, anything for the last hurrah?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to thank council. I want to thank everybody for allowing me to sit in this position for so many years. I've been with the city for 21 years, and it has given me a lot of opportunity for growth and wisdom and, oh, council. I want to say goodbye. This is my last meeting. Please be kind to my successor, Josh Shidibe. Thank you for coming on board.
Thank you for having me. Judy Few.
And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's just, we have the United Way coming up, 17th and 18th. So many things happening over the next couple of weeks. And our fine city, the 18th, there's also an Elks 100 Year Celebration, I believe, 4 p.m. on Saturday there. The Ebecks Awards are coming up, the 24th, the next Friday after that. We have a premier's dinner on October 30th in our fine city as well. And then to close out the month, Halloween's on a Friday, so the ghosts and goblins will be out in full force. So do we have a motion to move into committee? Counselor Willezer, Counselor Dubowski, seconded. All in favor? We are in committee.